Good morning, this is Director DeWolfe, thank you for being here. And now calling the Board Special Meeting to Order at 8:31 a.m. on Tuesday, August 25th. I will be chairing today's 2020 reopening update work session as Chair of the Executive Committee. Following today's work session, we will move into an executive session to discuss with Legal Counsel Representing Agency litigation and/or potential litigation per RCW 42.30.1101I. For the record, this morning, I will call Roll, and I will begin with Director Hampson. Okay, next we will move to Director Harris.
Here.
Thank you, good morning, Director Percy.
Here.
Thank you, good morning, Director Mack.
Here.
Thank you, Director Rankin.
Good morning, here.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith.
Present.
Okay, and that leaves me, and that's this is Director DeWolfe. I would like to note that the Superintendent is also present, as well as staff, who will be presenting as we move through the agenda. So just a little bit here for housekeeping, the meeting, this meeting is being held remotely, consistent with the Governor's Proclamation prohibiting meetings such as this one from being held in person. The public is being provided remote access today by phone and through SPSTV by broadcast and streaming on YouTube. To facilitate this remote meeting, I will ask all participants to ensure you are muted when you are not speaking. There is not a public comment opportunity this morning, and we will not be using the chat feature in Teams today. Staff will be working to administer the meeting and may be muting participants to address feedback and ensure we can hear from directors and staff. For directors or staff on the phone, if you feel that you may have been muted, please press star six to unmute. We have two topics to cover today, during today's work session. First will be revision to the 2020-2021 school year calendar. The second topic will be revisions to the 2020-2021 transportation service standards, ridership eligibility. These changes relate to school start date and end times. Both of these topics are the subject of a Board Action Report that is included on tomorrow's regular Board Meeting Agenda for Introduction to Action. And so I'm grateful to the staff for pulling this meeting together. So shortly, I wanted to make sure we can have all directors engaging with the content prior to tomorrow's meeting, so I appreciate everybody pulling this together. After the short, the staff presentation on each topic today, I'll move into directors' questions and comments. And that should be it. So with that, Dr. Cod, I will now hand it over to Chief of Human Resources, Dr. Clover Cod, to begin the presentations on revisions to the 2020 through the 2021 school year calendar.
Hello, this is Clover Cod, Chief Human Resource Officer. Good morning, everybody. We are here to present to you a proposed calendar for 2021 school year. Seattle Education Association and Seattle Public Schools have been bargaining over the summer, and we've reached a tentative agreement on what would be a new school year calendar. The original start date of school was set for September 2nd, 2020, with an end school year date of June 18th, 2021. This new proposed calendar provides two full additional waiver days, which means that school would now start on Friday, September 4th. These two waiver days are for staff professional development. This is district-directed professional development to ensure that we are ready for a remote start to the school year. The end of the school year remains the same on June 18th, 2021, and we do have built-in three days for snow slash emergencies at the, throughout the school year. That has remained the same. So with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cod. We will start with Director, we'll go backwards, we'll start with Director Rivera Smith.
Thank you, good morning. Thank you, Dr. Cod, for the information you shared here. I feel like this went through, obviously, some really robust bargaining negotiations with the union, and I know that it's not, it's not, I feel like, I feel like it's already been announced, this has already been shared with the public. I honestly feel like, you know, there's not a whole lot of movement allowed at this point, or room for it because of the bargaining and because of the announcements. But do we feel, I guess I can ask as far as, there are so many unknowns. Let's say that we get students in for like the special ed to come into classes, and then we have weather day, severe weather day. Could it be that we end up still going extra days past the school year as we make room, as we have to adjust for those? Or do we have, one of the built-ins, I'm looking at the calendar, but it's really tiny on my screen, we have built-in snow makeup days, I take it? I think there's one in Jan, anywhere, I'm trying to.
There's one in Jan.
Buy ball this.
The day between semesters, and then we also got two at the end of the year.
Yeah. So again, can you just speak to, you know, the reasoning behind the date? We've had a lot of emails about Friday being a weird start to school day. Can you just speak to the need for that?
Yes, so we worked really hard to figure out how many full days of professional development we could add in for staff so that they would be ready. And recognizing that we still need to meet the minimum instructional hours, average of 1,027 throughout the school year. We were not able to get to a third full day and still meet those minimum instructional hours. Thus, we had to start, start school on the 4th of September, as opposed to, I know some people want it to be the 8th. We just, we can't get there with instructional minutes, instructional hours, and so this was the best compromise we had. It still allows for two additional full days of district-directed professional development, and this is the tentative agreement that we reached with Seattle Education Association.
Thank you. No other questions or comments, thank you.
Thank you, Director Rivera Smith. Director Rankin.
Hi. Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I am wondering what the barrier is to applying for waivers of instructional hours? We're, we've been talking about waiving instruct, I know we have to have 180 instructional days and 1,027 instructional hours within those days. And so we're asking for days, but I'm wondering why we can't also ask for a waiver of hours? And related to that, I would like to better understand what the strong start is and how, what it actually means when we say that September 4th is the first day of school? I'm assuming it doesn't mean we're just jumping right into starting classes, you know, starting formal instruction, but it will still count as instructional hours? So what that first week looks like, what families can expect? And then connected to both of those things, how we are providing those instructional hours? And what that first week looks like, knowing that not all students will have devices and be connected?
Okay, so that was three questions, let me try to answer them.
Yeah.
If I can, and I might need a little bit of help from my colleagues, but here I go. So first and foremost, we are asking OSPI for a waiver of two of the 180 days. So that would make the student school year 178 days, not 180 days. However, when we ask for those waiver days, we are still able to meet the instructional hours, even though we've taken two days away, because we had a little bit extra to play with, if that makes any sense whatsoever. But when we go to ask, if we were to ask for a third day, we would now then fall under the 10, 27 hours. I do not know the answer to why we can't waive instructional hours. I do know you can waive instructional days, as long as you can meet your instructional hours. I do not know the second part of your question. Maybe we can come back to that at the end. The second question was, okay, well, what can families expect on September 4th through 11? What will that look like? So the purpose of the September 4th through the 11th, we're calling a strong start, is so that we can really focus educator efforts around creating a warm, welcoming environment for our students, really focusing in on the social emotional well-being, student connections, family connections, making sure that our students are able to access the technology, the platforms, really kind of the nuts and bolts of how do you log on and access your asynchronous assignments? Where will I post the, the assignments for the week? What will that look like? Really trying to set the students up and the families up really for success when we go in full force with, you know, our, you know, core content. So this is kind of typical when you are starting school pre-COVID and brick and mortar. The first few days of school have always kind of focused in on this effort. You know, you're learning your new routines, you're learning about who's in your classroom, you're creating a classroom environment. But now more so than ever, when we're in a virtual world, we really are going to have to focus intently on what that looks like, and how do I build those connections virtually? So students will still log on the first day of school, they will meet their teacher, they will meet their classmates, they will begin to understand how we work in a remote environment, and they will learn new routines. And that is what the first, you know, first week of school looks like normally. One of the things that will happen is in order to meet our instructional minutes, we will also have asynchronous lessons posted for students to access, but they will be focused in on social emotional well-being, culture, climate, making sure maybe students are practicing accessing the platforms, and so it's, that's why we're calling it a strong start. And I think, yeah, so that is how we provide the instructional hours, is we will also have to have some asynchronous activities posted for that week.
Okay, Director Rankin. Thank you.
Wait, no, my third question was, what about not all students having devices?
So I would have to have somebody else on this call answer, because I know that they are working around the clock to get devices in student hands, so I don't know if Chief Bergy is on the line, who could help with that? Probably bargaining.
Yeah, so this is, you know, I believe that our goal is still to have devices out. We are still waiting for the iPads to arrive, but I believe that most, the other devices, the laptops that will send out and distribute to grades, the elementary grades that aren't getting iPads, are in and getting imaged, and we'll have a distribution plan, but we are, continue to work with the vendor for the iPads. But hopefully, they will arrive in time.
Hi, it's Jolynn.
Is that Chief Bergy?
Hi, Jolynn.
We only have about 20, we have about 2,200 iPads, so I'm going to answer the question that came in, I'm just waiting to get confirmation. We have 2,200 iPads that were a little, are not going to make it the week of September 8th at this current time. Everything else is going, everything else, we have commitments for, or we already have. So we're in good shape there, it's just those last 2,300 iPads that were still working.
Thank you. Next we'll move to Director Mack.
Hi, I want to build on Director Rankin's questions, because I, I think that we are all anxiously awaiting more information about what exactly is going to be happening, and what's the schedule for learning? What does that first week look like? And then what does the following weeks look like? Families are kind of scrambling to figure out, you know, how we're going to manage this remote learning environment. And so, one question I have is exactly when will schools be communicating out this plan and the schedule? The, I guess, you know, at schools, we call it the master schedule. When will students get the information about when to log in, how to log in, what time they're expected to be there on the 4th and the 8th and the 9th? When are we going to get that information from schools?
And Director, and Dr. Cod, if that doesn't feel like it's school year calendar and the person's not here, we can also hold that until the start time, if that, whatever you need.
Yeah, I feel like that's more about a start time issue, as opposed to this, this school year calendar around days. Okay, so the other question then is on the, related to technology, the answer, the question about when exactly those are going to be delivered? Will, will those be delivered before the 4th? So students are ready, or are they going to be delivered the week of the 8th? I was kind of confused about that, because if students don't actually have their devices in hand.
Chief Bergy, can you clarify to Director Mack what we do have going out? Because I think I'm, I'm also, I'd also want to get a better understanding of the landscape to add to Director Mack of like, what's out and what's not? Because it just feels like jumbled.
Director DeWolfe, this is Sheri Cox. Chief Bergy is no longer on the line, I don't see her in the list of participants. We can definitely get you that list of what's been distributed, what is soon to be distributed, and then what is lagging due to getting, getting into the United States from China?
I think, I think the question that I'm asking, Director Cox, I appreciate you popping in, is that families, including myself, have gotten zero information about when and how technology is going to be distributed before the first day of school. And so I'm just trying to get clarity on what the distribution plan actually is. If we're expecting to start school on the 4th, how, when are students going to be accessing their devices, the ones that have not gotten them yet?
Great.
If that's not something we have clear yet, then maybe that, that's the.
I will, yeah, I will do my best to chase down that information today, Director Mack, because I, as a parent myself, am wondering about that, and in conversations I've had, I think the middle and the high schools are each doing their own distributions, but I'm not sure on the communication plan to families, because I can speak to, as a family member myself, that I have not received any communication from my students' school about that. So I will chase down both, kind of what's been distributed, what's soon to be distributed, what is likely not to be distributed before the first day of school, and then what is the communication plan to families to get the information about when I get my device, and how do I get my device, and all of that.
Yes, you appreciate that.
Yep, you're welcome.
Okay, thank you very much, Director Mack. Next we'll go to Director Percy.
Yeah, I don't have any questions at this point.
Thank you, Director Harris.
My questions have been answered, my deepest concern about the communication plan, and for those children and students that do not have devices, what does their first day or week of school look like?
In the past, what we have done is we have had packets for students, we have made phone calls, we have had connections, I mean, I guess that's kind of what happened in the spring, but I would need maybe the teaching and learning side of the house to talk about what that will look like.
If we could hear back on that, much appreciated, thank you.
Yeah, hi, this is Wyatt Jesse, Chief, Chief of Schools, a continuous improvement. And so to answer that question, Director Harris, the, they are working feverishly to get devices in every student's hands, we're working, waiting for the distributors to give us all the computers. We have a, Dots has teed up a communication out to families and to the staff about how to use their, use a phone to call in to Teams to join the lessons, plus we do have packets, so that, that is, until we can get all those devices distributed, that's the plan that has been developed and is teed up to be sent out.
And when would that be sent out? Because we're hearing a great deal of anxiety from our families.
I hear that too, I don't have a direct answer on the exact date for when that is going to be sent out.
And when will we have?
Director Harris, this is Sheri again, I'm happy to include that in the information that I chased down today, as to what are the timelines that you can expect from us.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Director Harris, and Director Hampson, I think is not, yes, just confirming. And.
I'm here.
Director Hampson?
Yeah.
Hi. Sorry, go ahead.
I've been here the whole time.
Cool, I couldn't see on the Teams, but I think you're.
I'm on the phone, so you got to give me a couple of minutes to unmute.
Exactly, okay, cool, well, yes, any questions or comments from you?
I guess I'm a little confused, because I thought this was the session where we would be presented with the detail that we're asking for around expectations with respect to, if we are starting on the 4th, what that means, given that we are pre, any level of confidence that we'll have devices rolled out, and this is a quote-unquote "strong start" for quote-unquote "remote learning." And as such, my question is why, two things, one, why we're not being more clear and honest and transparent about what we do, what we can confirm, what we can be confident about, and then, and going with that? So if we, it sounds right now, given that we have a bar to approve tomorrow, that we don't know what, that we will have devices rolled out for K5 by that first week, the 4th through 11th. And as such, that that week shouldn't have anything to do with, I, I'm not going to ask parents to call in on it, on a Teams call. I'm, I'm trying to do that right now, and, and it's difficult, so. It's, my question is why we haven't just been more upfront about where we are, and where we're going to be and plan based on that? And then, at the same time, why, if we need more time, we don't just ask for an additional waiver of both, if necessary, instructional days, or get rid of the snow days and ask for, use those days and ask for a time, when and if those things happen? It feels really like we're adding to the, the level of anxiety and ambiguity for parents at this point. Muting now.
Okay, thank you, Director Hampson. I don't have any questions for you at this time, Dr. Cod. My questions have been asked.
Can I actually get, can somebody get time to answer my questions, please?
Director Mack, can you ask your question about this?
Director Hampson.
Again, please.
No, this is Director Hampson.
Sorry, Director Hampson. Okay, so you're asking about devices and what we do if students really don't have devices, what will that look like? And how could we move the calendar days around to account for that? That's what you're getting at?
I think two potential paths. One is we acknowledge that we, that we do not know, which, as of this call, which was the time when we as a board would have needed to be presented with that information in order to vote tomorrow. And we create, and the first week, starting on the 4th, is something that has nothing to do with any kind of device-related activity, because we can't confirm that we have them for K5. And maybe we can do it for, for 6th through 12th, but not K5, so what does that then look like? And that that's what we should plan for, and the other option is that we ask for additional waivers. Those are, and why we aren't considering either of those things at this point. That's my question.
Okay, my understanding is that you're not allowed to waive the instructional minutes, you're only allowed to waive the instructional days if you can meet the minimum requirements of the minutes and hours. But I will take that back and consult with Legal and Jolynn Bergy.
And we have our quote-unquote "snow days" still, right? Meaning we could push off waiver through that time, correct?
Yeah, so we do bargain when the snow days are, so I'll need to take that back to the negotiations table as well.
Hi, Wyatt Jesse, Chief, yeah, Wyatt Jesse, Chief of Schools, a continuous improvement. Director Hampson, your question is if we have set snow days in the calendar? And so when we have those snow days, we still have to file for another waiver with OSPI if, in the event they do happen? They're just set up days to try to provide the release?
Yes, I understand, I'm understanding. I'm saying that that's another waiver. But the other part of the question is why are we not preparing now for starting school without devices, given that we have no confidence between the 4th and the 11th that we will have rolled out devices to K5 families? Which it seems like that's where we are.
This, Director Hampson, this is Sheri, Chief of Staff again. My understanding is that the devices that are, that are possibly not going to arrive on time are the devices for our K3 students. Our 4 or 5 students, I believe, will have their devices. And then just a reminder for everyone on the call, that our kindergarten students start three days later than our 1st through 12th grade students. And so I, I will check, I know Jolynn Bergy just got this information from the Apple vendor yesterday, so the information is coming to us, and we're putting pressure on the vendor to, to try to get it through, over from China as soon as possible.
So I'm like, that doesn't answer my question, which is that today is the day, today and tomorrow, that we need to know these things with confidence, and not knowing them with confidence means we have to make a different decision, not based on what we hope without actual knowledge or confidence. And as somebody who has a K5 student, I haven't gotten a single word about laptops, as everyone else has stated, so there's no expectation that those things will arrive. And there are families scrambling, thinking that they're going to have to provide their own, and we haven't communicated with them at all. So I'm, I'm, I'm still not seeing why we don't be, make an honest assessment of what we do know by the time we need to know it, which is you're asking us to make a decision tomorrow based on a start date without information. And I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Dr. Cod, I don't have any more questions for you, so I will, I think we can move to our next portion of the presentation, which is around the 2020-2021 transportation service standards. So I will hand it over to Chief Operations Officer Fred Podesta to begin the presentations on revisions to the 2020-2021 transportation service standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Director DeWolfe. Again, this is Fred Podesta, Chief Operations Officer. Annually, the Board of Directors passes transportation service standards, which are primarily eligibility standards that describe how and when the district provides transportation to and from school. One aspect of the standards are an appendix that lists start and end times for schools through the whole district, mainly to show how the transportation schedule. district, mainly to show how the transportation schedule relates to the schedule at each school for the start and end of the school day. Given that we're in primarily a remote start environment, this fall, we had feedback from families that, you know, a consistent start and end times, that were more at the top of the hour, at a half hour, kind of more around times would be better, and a somewhat later start than had been the case, given our onsite learning model would be beneficial. So the remote learning start and end times have been tuned to that. And so we're requesting that the board adopt a revised set of Transportation Service Standards, removing that appendix that had a more detailed bell times for every school, and just acknowledge that our start and end times are different this year, and that transportation, when it is provided, around those start and end times, will follow the typical model of a 15-minute window arrival time, 15, a window that's 15 minutes prior to the start of the school day, and a departure time that's 10 minutes after. This is a little confusing, because we're talking about transportation that by and large won't occur at the start of school, since we're in remote learning. But this is where the district codifies the start and end times. So we thought it was appropriate to revise them to reflect the school schedules we will have. The rest of the standards, if we do provide transportation, at this point, don't need to change. There's lots of flexibility for special education transportation, and we may be providing some of that, but that will conform to the standards as they are, which are either tied to the school's start and end times or specifically tailored to a student's individual education plan or 504 plan. So this is primarily a housekeeping issue, but it's, it's good that this policy, this document does reflect the reality of school start and end times in the coming school year. I will note, the early departure times, which usually aren't reflected in this document, but we did list them in a table in the Board Action Report, for K through five is not reflected accurately. It should read 1:45 PM, and we'll correct that in the bar that comes to the board tomorrow. So with that, I'll open this up for questions.
Thank you, Chief Podesta. I will start alphabetical with Director Hampson.
So in terms of engagement, can I just, I'm gonna, sorry, Chief Podesta, I'm gonna kind of combine the engagement on the two topics. There is a statement made under the racial equity analysis about the survey that was done in May, which was, you know, pretty limited. And then, there's also some comments about there being, with community-based organizations, our research and evaluation department at the University of Washington conducted focus groups and other small group convenings to gather opinions and information on remote learning during the spring planning for the 20 to 21 school year. Where is that? Data.
I'm gonna ask if any of my colleagues can help answer that question. I know Dr. Scarlett and her team and others worked to, on engagement after the initial engagement teams, and as well, the engagement teams that started when we began planning the start of school, to see, you know, what data might be available from those processes.
Director Hampson, you sort of really speedily read through that excerpt, and so I didn't catch every part of it. Would you mind reading the excerpt again for me?
I'm just reading what's in the bar on the racial equity analysis, on the equity analysis, the second paragraph.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm on my phone. I don't have availability to it right now, so I apologize. Would you mind reading that again to me?
As a result of missing these critical family voices, SPS, in partnership with community-based organizations, our research and evaluation department and the University of Washington, so this is actually the research, no eval department apparently, conducted focus groups and other small group convenings to gather opinions and information on remote learning during the spring and planning for the 20 to 21 school year. So if there was racial equity analysis done through research and evaluation, I haven't seen it, and it's being cited here, and I would like to see it, because I'm not aware of any of that.
So as a result of equity analysis processes we did with, my team did in a partnership, that we've had a long-term partnership with University of Washington College of Education, we're all part of a, what's called a research-practice partnership. And so our research and evaluation team members, like Dr. Anderson, are a part of it. Also, curriculum instruction, some folks altogether on the SPSN, plus Seattle Education Association, Center for Racial Equity, along with University of Washington. So one of the things that we did was try to per also some additional feedback from the school board after the June 30th presentation, or excuse me, I can't remember which day, was a work session, presentation. We did conduct focus groups. We worked with families of color, some community leaders also, in order to get additional feedback, particularly from families of African-American males and other students of color, in order to get additional feedback about the interests and values and priorities, and what was happening for their students in connection to digital learning.
So where is that all compiled? And it's cited here, it needs to be presented to the board, so where is all that?
I do have some data transcripts from, and high-level overview also, from each of those as well. So I'd be happy to forward that information. We also took some information from the State of Black Child Genius. And so I'd be happy to forward that information to the board.
I would like for it to be actually attached to the bar, please.
Note it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hampson. Director Harris?
I would second the attachment to the bar on meeting the race and equity outreach. And the more we can have information prior to, not one day, but prior to our vote, it would be much appreciated. It's our fiduciary duty. We're not trying to be difficult with y'all, but please understand the situation that we're in with hundreds of people asking us questions that we don't know the answers to. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Harris. I think the pace is pretty, I think we're all going through an intense pace right now. Director Hershey?
Yeah, I'm still reading through some pieces. I'll let you know if I have any questions on the backend.
Awesome. I can circle back to Director Matt.
Yeah, hi, can we have the section of the bar that provides for the times? Because I, it would be helpful, I think, to the public and to ourselves to just see that information. What we're talking specifically about?
Page two, you think, is, has the little, the four boxes with start and time? Is that the one you're referring to? Page two?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I, you know, it's 58 pages of, of stuff that was attached here.
Ms. Wilson, gentlemen.
And the Transportation Service Standards that we approved previously were extensively redlined. The ones that are, the one that is in front of us today is only redlined with one paragraph. Is that correct, Mr. Podesta?
Yes. The, so both versions are attached, one for reference and one for approval, because since the board did adopt a version, those were accepted. And the red line for what's, when approval now is the change that this action causes, which is to delete Appendix B, which had a per-school set of bell times, and replace it with language that is a little bit more general, that, that just describes the practice that the bell, the transportation standards will be adjusted to the bell times per the normal practice.
No, if you, oh, yeah, thank you. I do appreciate your scrolling, and you're showing that part, that that's the one red line change. And then it, the statement.
If I could, if I could just mention for the audience that on March 11th, we approved, just for the audience on the phone, on March 11th, the day we announced closures, was the day we approved this the last time. So that's how recently we've worked on this.
Right. The Transportation Service Standards are approved every year prior to the start of the school, and typically around March. And they, they set the bell times, they also set who gets transportation and how, et cetera. Just, and just, you know, for clarity here, the strike through on the actual document is just saying that the bus arrival times exist, but the times are not being, they're in the bar, but they're not in the actual Transportation Service Standards.
Correct.
We're deleting, we're deleting that.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm just procedurally trying to understand exactly what's happening here. So can you scroll back to the, the bar that, just, I want to go back to the time, so that the public actually can see, this is the, this is what we're voting on. Start times of 8:30 AM to 3:00. And then Wednesday, and then you said that on the 6/12 Wednesday, that's actually supposed to be 1:45, not 2:45?
For K through five, that Wednesday early release should read 1:45 PM.
And for six through 12, it's 2:45. So, okay. So that needs to be stricken through. Now, can, I appreciate whoever's working the computer right now, can you scroll up to the actual motion? Does, is it in the motion that we actually vote on the, the bell times? And it says the 8:30? Because procedurally, this is, it's only in the bar, it's not actually in the document anymore. And it doesn't get moved. So I'm a little confused about, just procedurally, this feels really odd, because we're deleting the appendix where the bell times are approved. So there isn't, it's not in here. It's in the bar, but it's not actually in the Transportation Service Standards.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I'll just leave that for a second, because I just, I, I just, from a legal perspective, I, this isn't, I, I think the motion's going to need to be changed or something, because this is not what we, what we're actually approving here, only in the Transportation Service Standards, is different start times and end times.
So we'll revise the language in the motion to acknowledge the table that's in the Board Action Report.
Okay. Um, thank you. I think that, that helps with the clarity. The other, the other piece that is not, I, I want to go back, and I know, Mr. Podesta, this isn't entirely your area. However, I, I share deeply the concern that is being raised about the fact that we don't have the clarity around what exactly school is going to be looking like for students. We don't have communication from schools about what the potential schedule will be like. We don't have information in this presentation about what's going to be happening between 8:30 and 1:45 on Wednesdays, on that first week of school. Families don't know what that looks like. We're approving a start and end time, but we're not, we don't have the information about what happens in the middle. And additionally, my, I, I raise the strong concern that Director Hampson was raising, is that, you know, without, without the plan for having devices in students' hands, and sharing with them the plan for actually engaging them, we, we have so, we all have so many questions that aren't being answered. And so I guess, I, as Director Hampson had asked for, the detailed information about who was consulted in the racial equity analysis, and what was the results from those focus groups, and that data and information that they shared, my request would be, in order to approve the start and end times in the calendar, I think that it would be appropriate and helpful to have included in the bar the synopsis of information of what exactly is happening in that first week, how students are going to engage, and how they're going to be getting their devices.
Director Matt, this is Sheri again. A couple of things I want to note is that we will have a work session, and I realize it's not before the vote tomorrow on schedules and the transportation standards, but it will be, week three of these weekly meetings will be about the actual daily schedules. I, I hear your request, and I will get you, along with the distribution plan and our communication plan to families regarding the tech devices, et cetera. I can put, I can also include the schedules as we know to date.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that. I, my, my second question is directly related to the Transportation Service Standards, and whether or not we're in an odd situation here, whether or not transportation may be provided to students that are in childcare programs in our buildings.
We, we're not funded to do that. We're funded for to and from school transportation. And at this point, we, we have not had that discussion.
And it's not provided for in the Transportation Service Standards?
No. Only, only to the extent that it's alternative transportation to or from school. That transportation to a program, instead of to a student's residence, we sometimes provide for, but not as part of to from home to programs.
And at this point, there's no expectation that that would be provided?
We haven't raised that expectation. There, you know, has been some discussion about would there be funding for other, you know, transportation services that might support students with regards to meals or other things? I think that's speculative at this point, and might come at the expense of other things. So we haven't, you know, we're really focusing on providing, being ready to provide to and from transportation to special ed students who do need services in our buildings.
And so that's the primary expectation at the start of school, that the transportation will be available for the special education students that do require in-person instruction, and essentially no other students.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Director Matt. Director Rankin?
Thank you. Yeah, I have questions specific to the bell times. Well, first I have a comment, I guess, which is kind of frustration, confusion with the order in which decisions were made. So the calendar and the start times were all decided in bargaining without any family or community engagement or input. And that seems to me to be backwards, that the board and the district and, and the larger community, including educators, should have been able to participate in a conversation about what What start and end times looked like, and then it goes to bargaining. So. That I, it's hard to explain to families what's going on when it feels like they're not part of the conversation, which, because they weren't. Um. That being said, I, the uh. The start, the proposed changes to the start and end times being eight thirty and nine. That's in this, right? Yeah, the bell times are in this. Um, are proposed to be aligned in terms of, you know, K five, K eight and secondary. But that's not how the bell times are currently. So of our ten K eights. Eight of them now start at the secondary time. So we're proposing that they move earlier, which doesn't seem, it seems to me like they should stay with the eight, you know. I would propose or ask why, and there's also five elementary schools that currently start at eight fifty-five. And one middle school that starts at seven fifty-five. So I'm just wondering um why we. Broke up the tart times by K five, K eight, secondary instead of. Schools that currently start at seven fifty-five will start at eight thirty remotely and schools that currently start at eight fifty-five will start at nine o'clock remotely. Um, as people may, you know, that's already sort of worked into their. Their daily lives and schedules of how they operate throughout the school year. Um, and then I guess a second question would be, why can't everybody start at nine? But that's not as 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 uh. I'm not wondering about that as much as I'm wondering about. Um, you know, how do we know that we're doing what's going to work for families and with the alignment of the times? To their current time.
Um, Director Rankin, I may be misunderstanding your question, but. I believe the new ski and one of my colleagues should virtually kick me under the table if I'm misstating this, but. Um, the new scheme is consistent across the system. The this this table isn't meant to convey. By school, if it's an elementary school, what time it starts versus a K through eight, it is. Um, consistent across grade levels across the system. So that's why we wanted to represent it in a way that was not school-based, but.
So that is my question is.
Grade level based.
But that is my question is if we have um, you know, like the K eights especially. All all but two of them start on the secondary time. So we're asking them to start earlier than they normally would. Which is kind of confusing and a bit disruptive for. For those families who are are, you know, organize their day during the school year around a a later time.
I believe there was an interest in consistency, uh, you know, across the system and they needed to pick one time or the other.
Was that, but that since we're remote, and I'm not challenging you on this Fred, so forgive me, just in general, since we're remote. Kind of if it doesn't, kind of nothing matters. And was the desire for consistency to make it easier for central offices? Or or in accordance with what these communities want, because we're going. In opposition to what they currently.
Do- Director Rankin, this is Sherry. Part of the consistency, especially with the K five and K eight schools was to support. Uh, the ask of our childcare providers so that they could. When they are um with the children during the day that they would know what to expect and that students would all start and end at the same time.
Okay, so so just to reiterate. Uh, it was not, not due to the desires of the communities themselves. Or even in consultation with.
I can't answer where the data came from, from our childcare providers. I just know that that was an ask that they had of us.
Um.
Is that, is that? If you don't mind, this is Dr. Charlie. Um, I'd just like to interject about that. Um, we um, I just want to highlight the fact that our um childcare providers are the MVP of this entire situation. They never stop. They're the ones who had likely the most um contact with our families. Um, so I do believe that um. Community-based organizations that are accountable to students and families do have um contacts with families and um. Do represent also the interest of families um as well. So I do believe, um particularly. I've been on childcare calls um each week for the most part and um as um childcare providers in their leadership. Are sharing about the needs of families. They are speaking about um the conversations that they've been having with families as well. So I do just want to highlight that um point of, I think, knowledgeability of our healthcare providers.
Yeah, no, no, no shade to childcare providers. Um, they they are some of, have been some of the most consistent communicators and um we're relying on them. A ton right now and uh. Um. Yeah, but I I just still would say that this choice wasn't, was. No choice or or opportunity for input was given to families themselves at all. So just uh. Yeah, and and they're the ones that we are serving. Everything should be, everything we should do, everything we do should be student, student-centered first and then we figure out the adult needs around it. And um. We're not making this any easier on families right now, an already very challenging situation. So uh before I vote on this tomorrow, I I want to know that I'm. Um. Doing my best for 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 students and their families first. And I don't feel that way.
Thank you, Director Rankin. Director Rivera Smith.
Hi, thank you. Um, actually, I have a question for Director Rankin because can you show me where are you finding a K eight start and end time? Uh, the table doesn't specify K eights and um I want to just follow what you, I'm trying to.
Uh, yeah, it's in the packet. There's a whole table of the start and end time, the current bell times. In the transportation standards from last year.
So none of that's being changed, right? That's the only change in here is that is that one page with the red line. Uh, what is this page? Page nine of the packet. I don't know what page, what of the what, but. And it's the time schedule and it doesn't. Uh, um, I I'm not trying to argue with you. I'm just trying to figure out like where the K eight is specified because I don't see anything. Like in the bar, we have that that one little table that only goes K five, K five, K twelve, I'm sorry, six. Twelve, six twelve. Um, so I I I'm I'm feeling for K eight families because I'm seeing a lack of. Clarity on where they would land on this. Um, so that's what I was trying to find where you found them landing somewhere.
Um, so the the I'm now I can't, I can't find the table that you're looking.
Directors.
Director, Director Rivera Smith, on page thirty-one of the packet, thirty-one out of fifty-five, it illustrates the. The times that we approved on March eleventh, twenty twenty. And that larger is K through eight. I think what lies at saying, why doesn't the the what we're, we're voting on tomorrow take into account? Some of the K through eight. I think that's what she's asking. She's not saying it's already there. She's saying why isn't it? Go down to that granular level of specificity.
Yes, I'm asking why.
Well, we're not changing.
The times are across grade levels instead of across, you know, we already didn't have consistency and some. And and you know, and eight out of the ten K eights start at the secondary time and we're asking them all to start at the elementary time now. So I just.
Okay, no, I understand. Okay, I think so. Yeah, they they were specified previously when we approved and what things are are not being here. So. I'm not even seeing where they are being asked to start early because they're not clarified. So there's a question for um Chief Podesta, where? Where are we asking K eights to come like starting times?
These start and end times will be by grade level, not by school.
So the school itself, a K eight will have two different start and end times?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh.
That that's different, okay.
Sorry, this is, this is why Jesse, Chief of Schools, continues improvement. They do not have different start and end times for K eights. I'm sorry, I have to. Not accurate. Accuracy is that all of the. The K eights are going along with the elementary schedule. And so that was, that's the word. Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Jesse, to to dispe- just respectfully disagree. The document says that South Shore and Broadview Thompson started at seven forty and the other K through eight started at eight forty.
Right, that's my question because the current proposal is what Chief Jesse just said, which is that K eights. In the remote setting all start at the same time as K fives. And for eight out of ten of them, that's actually earlier than their current start time.
Yes, and as Chief Podesta, it's by grade level, not by the school.
No, except for for K eights, which is what Chief Jesse just said. K eights and K five, the proposal is K eights and K fives start at eight thirty. Six through twelve. Or middle schools and high schools start at nine remotely. And my question is, why? When most K eights currently start with the secondary times? Why we're having them start with the primary times? And then there are a couple of other exceptions. There are five elementary schools that currently start. With secondary times and we're asking them to start earlier and Denny currently starts. With the elementary side, school time because it's co-located with a high school. So my question is, why have we done it by grade level instead of by? The schedule that those populations, those buildings are already um used to. And if not, it doesn't make sense like it seems to me like the K, most of the K eights start at eight fifty-five, so they should start with the secondary time, but we didn't ask anybody is my point.
So this is wh- why at JSC, Chief of Schools, continuous improvement. So the um. The schedules in the past, so you're Director Rankin, you're bringing up things that were done um in the past. Some of that was around the alignment for transportation so that the transportation could be provided across different parts of the city.
I know why. I I know why. That's all because of the busing. I get it.
Right.
But that's still the sort of schedule that families are used to. So the feedback that we have gotten. Is that people, you know, people balked at the seven fifty-five time because without transportation, there's no reason to start that early. And in general, what I've heard from families is they don't want to start any earlier than they already have been.
That's, that's right. And so that's why the times got moved to eight thirty and some of the schools. As you know, started, did start at the seven fifty and then the the other part of the feedback that we have been receiving is the consistency, easy. To read, to understand schedules. Um, as you know, some families have students across different school sites and so one particular.
Okay, but we're asking almost all of the K eights, all but two, to start earlier than they currently start.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that question, Director Rankin.
The K eights. Most of them start at eight fifty-five now. So instead of having them start at nine, we're asking them to start at eight thirty. And I am wondering if there was feedback from those communities about that because that's the bulk, that's the majority of the K eights. So it does not make sense to me that we're aligning them with the K fives instead of the secondary. But we didn't ask anybody what they would prefer. And then the bigger picture is, this doesn't matter because nobody's leaving their houses. So why can't we all just start at nine? But again, we didn't ask anybody.
We did not engage with individual school sites for this work. It was more around the. Engagement teams and the focus groups that we've had across the city with different stakeholder groups.
And again, Director Rankin, I hear you that yes, we did not engage, but again, this comes from the childcare and then supporting. The childcare providers' needs um to have the. Elementary school-aged children start at a consistent time.
So President DeWolfe, can we put back up the um actual schedule that we're looking at? Because what I, what I heard confusion on. Um, and what I'm, what I'm still confused on by the responses from staff, they seem conflicting. Is um, this is grade level starts and so therefore, based on this schedule. Um. Students that are in K eight schools. Will have two different start times. Based on this schedule from my unders- from what we're voting on. So if they're in sixth grade at Blaine Elementary, which.
Oh. That is what Chief Jesse just said, that the K eights do not have two different start times. The K eights, the whole school will start at the same time as the K fives.
But, yeah, Director Rankin, what I'm, what I'm actually trying to get clarity here is that this table specifically does not say that. It says very specifically, K five, K five.
Gotcha, I apologize.
Six twelve. So therefore, what we're voting on is this table. And therefore, K eights. Will have two different start times within their schools. And I just, I just want clarity on what we are voting on. Are we approving a split? Within the school communities that have uh K, that are K eights, two different start times?
K eights can't have two separate start times because they need to have, they have shared staff. Who have within the contract a set amount of work hours. So the K eights need to have the same start and end time. If the board wants to have that moved that to the secondary schedule, we could do that. Or to keep it with the elementary one that is here. So it's either eight thirty or three. Or from nine to three fifties on the Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays and Fridays. And then additionally to the Wednesdays that are posted here. Uh, with the one forty-five being the end time as Chief Podesta had pointed out. The reason again is just on the um contractual side for the shared staff that are at K eights.
So uh I, I don't. I would agree that it would make sense to set K eights at the nine o'clock timeframe. Because that is uh it primarily what they are. There's a few exceptions. Uh, but it's not in this table and we're not voting on that. What we'd be voting on. Is a split in schools. So the table doesn't reflect what we're being asked. To vote on. And I just, I, if if what you just said, I'd like to have the clarity.
I think if we can make sure that the request that Director Mack is asking for, for tomorrow specifically. What we're about to vote on needs to be reflective of of what you've just described because as the table stands, it doesn't say that. So if we can make sure that the table is clear about what you've just described, Chief Jesse. That would be helpful for us because there is some nuance and it is not provided in the current document. Director Mack, I want to just roll back to Director Rivera Smith really quick before I do one last final round of questions. So if I could just make sure to. Uh, hear from Director Rivera Smith if she had any final questions before I do one, one last pass of directors before we close out.
Um, thank you. Um, no, I thank you so much for all this clarity. I'm glad we could all kind of talk about this because I was very lost with where K eight was landing with this graph here. Um, and I I definitely wanted to be responsive to those families. Um, so I will say my uh final um. My comments, I guess, for our last round now. Thank you.
Director DeWolfe, this is Sherry. Can I answer one of Director Rankin's questions about why we didn't choose to start everybody at one start time?
Sure.
So the the reasoning behind not starting at one start time was um, as you know, we are in hopes of someday returning students to the school buildings. And uh we knew that if um we kept one time, we would then. Should there come the day where we can have students in the classrooms again, it would be really difficult because we would have to switch um start times for those schools. And so we chose to go with two times um with our fingers crossed that we would someday be returning to the schoolhouse and transportation. Um, could not get all of our kids to schools if we had one start time.
Uh, thank you. That makes sense.
Okay.
Um.
Well, um, Chief Burgi's back on too, if you guys want an uh technology update.
Thank you, but we're still at questions and I'll see if directors do have questions. Thank you, Superintendent Juneau. Um, Director Rankin, I'm gonna just make sure that this is the last round. I'm gonna check in with Director Rivera Smith. This is the last round. Director Rivera Smith, if you have any final questions, share them now. I'm gonna go backwards.
Oh, sure. Okay, thank you. Um, yeah, I'm I'm just definitely concerned as your directors have shared about. The lack of engagement that's been done on these start times. I did a very formal Facebook kind of poll and parents and where they wanted to start. And granted, I don't give any like, I don't say that that's representative of our district at all. That's why I didn't like prepare it in some big document and present it to anybody because. Um, it was the feelers. It was just been out feelers and definitely there was a a desire for uh closer to the nine.
You feel comfortable sharing it? It sounds like there's a lot of factors that.
Say again?
Do you feel comfortable sharing it? It sounds like it has a lot of factors that don't.
Sure, I mean, I can, I I'm happy, I'm happy to scan it and 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 I I make a paper.
I I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's, if it's, if it's something that we can count as a. As a poll or something. I just want to be thoughtful about.
Yeah, and that's why I just, I'm just speaking to it as. In my engagement that I was, that I did there at least, um, it was heavily into the nine AM start times for almost all grades. it was heavily into the nine AM start times for almost all grades. There were a few outliers, and if anything, it leaned more towards nine thirty. But I know that's, that's out of the question probably. But either way, I just feel like, you know, that was just my short, uh, uh, very limited, um, reach out there on that.
Was it English and was it only on your page? And would people have to have internet? That's what I'm trying to say is.
Yeah, it was not on my personal page, it was on a, one of the COVID family pages. Has probably like eight thousand or five thousand members, um, at tops. And then, um, again, like, it was, it was informal. I totally, I'm saying that straight out. My point is that, you know, there has to be some sort of, I can at least present that. I can show you guys, hey, this is what I did. So I would really appreciate seeing from staff, you know, what they did towards start time engagement because it sounds like there might not have really been much. I know that in the engagement that was done with the Families of Color, uh, Seattle, that engagement was primarily around the hybrid model because that's back when we were talking about that. Granted, I haven't seen the data, I look forward to seeing this, she said we can see it to see if there was something about start times in there, uh, more specifically. But I really just feel like there was a huge gap that we didn't engage families on as, as the other directors have spoken to. I'm happy it did, but it's not representative, I get that. It's just my point was that, you know, we, we needed to have this done and we don't see it now. So those are just my concerns, um, I'll stop, thank you.
Thank you, okay, we have nineteen minutes, so burning questions please, directors. Director Rankin.
Um, no, no new burning questions. I, the K eight question, I would seriously would like to know if, um, at, at least the principals can be engaged on if they have a preference of starting at which time. Apologies, there's a dog in the background whining at me. There, that, that seems, yeah. Eight out of ten, eight out of ten K eights already having a later start time. It seems to be important that we ask them that that's what they want to continue, you know? If they want to start earlier.
Thank you, Director Rankin. That, that is part of why I wanted to make sure we had a session before tomorrow was that some of these questions getting asked, hopefully have the information tomorrow. Director Mack, finally back to you.
Yes, thank you. Uh, I just, I do want to reiterate that the clarity around K eight start times, uh, needs to be provided. And, um, from a family perspective, uh, you know, this is all incredibly challenging. I do have concerns around everybody expecting to get online at one time and whether or not the entire setup can handle that, our infrastructure. And, and again, coming back to the missing information that families don't have, even if we are voting on a start time tomorrow, we still don't have clear information on when technology will be distributed and, um, what daily schedules for families look like. And that missing information is, is, you know, is creating anxiety, uh, including myself. And, um, I would like, since, uh, uh, Chief Burgie is back on the line, if she has any additional information about the proposed rollout and distribution for devices, will it happen in the week prior to the fourth or, or not? What's the, what's the general plan for that?
This is Chief Burgie, should I respond, Director DeWolfe, now?
Please do, please do, yes.
Okay, so laptops for three through five will be out next week, right? So they'll be, they should all be rolled out by the fourth, the start of school date. Schools are scheduling their own time for supplies, devices. iPads will be going out the week of September eighth. We have, um, an email coming to you with more specifics. We have about twenty-seven hundred iPads that we know are going to be delayed, but there are three mitigating factors for that. Overall enrollment is down, for which we have a budget reserve to cover before I get, so there's that. Second, we had quite a few kids, thirty percent of our elementary students were participating, uh, in summer school. So they do have devices and we have the nine thousand Chromebooks that are out from Amazon. So we feel like it won't be perfect, um, but there are enough devices out there that we should have coverage for everyone to be able to start. So we will have to provide the school some guidance to make sure about how they roll those out, to make sure they're getting to the kids who need them first. But, um, in particular, you know, our kindergarten enrollment is down. So that is a big chunk of that twenty-seven hundred.
Okay, thank you. Director Harris.
Um, I share the concerns of my colleagues regarding K eights. I, um, woke up when we talked about enrollment being down and I'd like to know when we will see those numbers. And I appreciate getting information, but I think getting information in a bullet point fashion out to our communities as soon as possible to relieve the anxiety is job number one. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hershey.
Hey, so, yeah, my question was going to be, um, what is the, you said it was a big chunk juggling. So what I really wanted to know is, what are the actual numbers around that? And that can be answered in a Friday memo. But I would like to know kind of what is, what is our deficit that we're looking at in terms of making sure that we are getting the devices that we promised our students in their hands?
Yeah, I think we're in good shape and that's coming to you in an email today.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Director Hershey. Director Hampson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Um, so I, I find it, I, I think one of the things that, that is, continues to be troubling and why we're having to hold these weekly work sessions is because of the lack of forthcoming information from staff, which continues to be problematic. At a time when we need as much information and as timely a capacity as possible, it's well within our roles and, and rights and obligations as school board directors to request and be given information as is necessary to, to make these very difficult decisions that we know we need to make and that we're being asked to make. And it's fascinating to me that at a time when, um, I've specifically been asking for information about how our buildings are going to be used and the, the risk that we're taking on, really important risk, with many childcare providers that are stepping up in a major way, wanting to make sure that they're supported, that we're using, um, all of a sudden at this point, the input of childcare providers, um, without collaborating with building principals and families around, um, scheduling when we have, uh, not been able to get information about what we need to do to support childcare providers in a timely fashion. I'm very happy to support their willingness to, um, take on this massive transfer of risk in our buildings. But I want to make sure that we're supporting them effectively and equitably. And yet, at the same time, I'm not going to say that our families, uh, and our, um, building leadership doesn't, um, uh, play a role in that at the same time. And I'm feeling, um, very unsupported in making good decisions tomorrow about these things. And if we can't get broken through some of these information, um, blocks, uh, you know, we're gonna continue, we're, it, things are gonna get more difficult in terms of the decision-making because, um, the unintended consequences that we're facing right now are, are, are pretty major. So, um, I hope more information will be forthcoming and that it will be provided transparently and it will not be, um, just summary information in a Friday memo, but as we need it in order to make these decisions. That's all from me, thanks.
Thank you, Director Hampson. And my remaining question is just about, um, what we should expect to see tomorrow. And, um, kind of given our questions, some of the clarifications, if somebody just wants to speak in these last few moments here before we head into executive session about what we can expect to see tomorrow. Obviously, uh, wanted to give our board an opportunity to engage with this conversation before the vote or before being given the information tomorrow. So can you clarify what you expect to see added, changed, or answered, or information clarified to directors between now and tomorrow? Dr. Cod, Chief Burgie, Podesta, Sherri Cox, Superintendent Juno, anybody?
Director DeWolfe, this is Sherri Cox. My, uh, my understanding is like the, uh, the chart that is up on the screen right now, you've asked and we should have included the K eights with the elementary start times so that that is super clear to you as well as to families. You have asked Dr. Scarlett to send the, or include the engagement data on the, um, on the bar itself. You have also asked, and I've committed to getting you a distribution plan about what's been as far as the technology. Director Mack has asked, not necessarily in the bar, but so for communication to also include, um, what we're looking at as far as daily schedules are concerned. That is my understanding to date.
This is, this is Clover Cod. I, I also heard a question about whether or not we can ask for a waiver of instructional minutes in addition to, um, days, and I do not know the answer to that. So I think we will find the answer to that. I also heard a suggestion about potentially trying to move the start date to a different date other than the fourth. I do not think that is possible at this point, given that we have a TA with SCA. We can bring it back to the table, but that will take negotiations. So, um, that's what I heard I need to try to find answers to.
This is Greg Narver, Chief Legal Counsel. Ronald Boy, I think is usually our, our expert on the waiver question. My understanding is that days can be waived, but hours cannot. That's at least the way the state law is written, but we'll nail that down. But I believe the answer is no on the hours. The other thing I had heard from Director Mack was to modify the motion language to affirmatively include the change in, in bell times. Normally, that's not something the board votes on, unlike the school calendar that it has to vote on. But obviously, these are unusual circumstances and the, uh, the usual way of having the bell times live in the transportation standards is obviously, uh, different this year. So we'll modify the motion language as well.
This is Director Iveta Smith. Can I, um, add something I think I also heard, hasn't been spoken to? Is that okay, President Wolf? I, I believe Director Rankin requested, and, and I do support that when you do clarify the K three eight start times, that they be, um, slotted in with the nine AM start time to be more consistent with the majority of what they already experience. And if that's something that can be considered, I don't know if that's a renegotiation, that's out of the question at this point. But that is something that, um, I think we would like to see.
I think we can certainly let staff, um, figure out how to determine that and then send the information back for sure.
Thank you very much.
Okay, is there anything else, uh, we should expect to see tomorrow? Given today's conversation? It sounds like, uh, Sherri Cox, I know you've covered some, Dr. Cod, you've covered some. And, um, I'm not thinking I have any more on my notes that you need to cover. So with that, I'm gonna actually move us into executive session a little early. Is that okay if I do that, Greg?
Yes, yes, it is. The, the public obviously isn't invited to the executive session, so starting that early is, is, is fine.
Actually, can we take a five minute break?
Sure, Director Harris, why don't we just start on time at ten AM? That'll give you seven minutes, give people a chance to stretch and bio breaks. And then I will see you at ten AM at the, uh, executive session. So we'll just take a small recess before ten, before we head into executive session. So if you're on, on this call as a director, please log out of this call and log into the executive session teams meeting. And I'll see you in seven.
And Director DeWolfe, you could make the, um, official executive session announcement at this point and note that you'll be calling the executive session to order at ten AM so that you don't have to come back to this meeting.
Okay. Okay, the board is now immediately recessing the board's special meeting into executive session in six minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation and or potential litigation per RCW four-two dot three zero dot one one zero one I, with the session scheduled for thirty minutes with an anticipated end time of ten thirty AM. Directors will be leaving this present remote meeting now for the duration of the executive session after their recess. And I'll return to the same remote meeting to make announcements should the executive session run past its scheduled end time and to adjourn the board's special meeting at the conclusion of the executive session. Again, directors, you have been provided that separate call-in teams information for executive session. So please leave that now, please leave this team's meeting now and meet me in the executive session, separate teams remote meeting, uh, in six minutes at ten AM.
Add some additional time here. So, the executive session to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation and/or potential litigation per RCW 42.30.1101I was originally scheduled for approximately 30 minutes. We are running long and this session is now expected to go an additional 15 minutes with an anticipated end time of 10:47 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
The counsel representing the agency litigation and/or potential litigation per RCW 42.30.1101I was originally scheduled for approximately thirty minutes. We are running long and the session is now expected to go an additional fifteen minutes, excuse me, ten minutes with an anticipated end time of ten fifty-seven AM. Thank you. Out of executive session, and the board special meeting is now reconvened at ten forty-nine AM. And there being no further business before the board, the board special meeting is now adjourned at ten forty-nine AM. Thank you all for attending.
Thank you.
Have a good day, everybody.